...six, and I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We have four members present, expecting one more. But a quorum of four suffices us to move forward. So, the first item on the list here is the consent agenda. The commission may request for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. We're going to take public comment in one motion for the consent agenda. The only item on here is a subdivision plat. It's a replat for Meadow Creek Edition, Section 1, Block 10, located at Southwest Boulevard and Grandma Trail. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. If anyone wishes to speak on the consent agenda, please come forward, state your name and address, or single-member district. All right, I'm going to close public. Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Mike Wise, I'm from the Catholic Diocese, and we own the property in question here.
Okay.
And I just wondered if it makes a difference. It says a Grandma Trail, I should say Blue Grandma Trail.
Thank you.
I didn't know if that would make a difference or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Blue Grandma Trail. So Southwest Boulevard at Blue Grandma Trail. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four, zero. Okay, we're going to move a couple of these items around a little bit. We've got a couple of cases that are grouped up in different sections of the agenda here. So, under regular agenda subdivision plats, the Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. And then, under rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments, the City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. So I'm going to read in A1 and B4 together because it's the same property. So FP 2329 and FP 2330, a request for approval of a final plat of Arden Heights, Section 5 and Section 6, located northwest of the intersection of Arden Road and FM 2288. Then, under rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments, Item 4, Z 2308, a request for approval of a rezoning from Ranch and Estate zoning district to single-family residential RS1 zoning district on the property located at the northwest corner of Arden Road and FM 2288. Ms. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sherry Bailey, Senior Planner. You have before you, as you indicated, final plat 2329 and final plat 2330. That is Section 5 and Section 6 of Arden Heights. I just wanted to remind you that in June, you did approve the preliminary plat, so these two sections, 5 and 6, are the first final plats to come into the larger lot preliminary plat subdivision. The proposed zoning for this area is RS1. Access is going to be off of Boski Drive. It's in District 6, Larry Miller's district, and again, it's in the Arden Heights neighborhood. This is Section 5. It is the first one that you would meet if you were coming up Boski into the Arden Heights subdivision, and it will be on the north side of Boski Drive. And I don't know whether it's Boski or Bosk, so I'll probably split that. And this is Section 6. There are no variances that are requested, either 4, 5, or 6, so we have conditions that we are recommending for each individually, and I'll go through those. Staff is recommending approval of Arden Heights, Section 5, with the following nine conditions. Prior to plat recreation, provide tax certification, specify the septic system, and provide Tom Green County approval notice. Prepare and submit plans illustrating proposed water mains and service connections, and complete installation. Provide temporary turnaround for the dead-end streets as required, because obviously, Section 5 does end at that north end, and will continue at a later date. Submit a drainage study and make any required improvements. Boski Drive, prepare plans and construct Boski Drive with a 48-foot pavement or 40-foot with sidewalks. It is a minor collector. Navidet Street, prepare and construct with a 40-foot pavement. It is a local street, and again, we have the same requirement of the cul-de-sac at the end or a turnaround. Add fire hydrant and fire access where necessary. Provide a note on the plat stating that that will be done. And just a reminder, access to Market Road, 2288, is controlled by Tech Dot. They will be required to coordinate intersection plans with Tech Dot and to provide that documentation of approval from Tech Dot. And then, on Section 6, we have basically the same conditions. Provide tax certificate, specify the septic system, and provide Tom Green County approval. Prepare and submit plans illustrating proposed water mains and service connections, and complete installation. Provide temporary turnaround for dead-end streets as required. Submit a drainage study on Nietzsche Street. Prepare and submit plans for 40-foot local street. Add fire hydrant and fire access where necessary. Provide the note on the plat. Boski Drive, prepare and submit plans for approval and construction for the minimum 40-foot pavement with no sidewalk and 40-foot with sidewalk. And that, as I indicated before, is right-of-way for a minor collector. And with that, staff is recommending approval of both of those. Are there any questions?
Okay, so, do you want to go through the rezoning?
Surely.
As well, or are we rezoning the entire area?
We are, the rezoning is reflecting the annexation that they have submitted for and will be coming to City Council, and we are recommending the rezoning to RS1, and I'll get there in just a moment.
Sorry for making you jump around.
There we go.
Yeah.
The lower portion has already been annexed into the city. This is for that northern portion that is in red. Again, it's in SMD 6, Larry Miller's, and it's in the Bluffs neighborhood. The zoning, as I indicated, will be dependent upon the annexation into the city, and the annexation is set for the second council meeting in August to receive the petition, and then the annexation itself will come to council the following month. So they are allowed to now recommend and request the zoning that they come into the city, and so they have recommended RS1 because those lots on that northern portion are half-acre lots. They will be served by septic but will have city water, and because of that, they have to fall under the RS1. They do not fall under the RNE, which we would normally bring it in. And we sent out three notices because that's all that were within the 200 feet, and we did not receive any in support or opposition. And staff is recommending approval of this after we looked at the rationale that it makes sense if we're considering the annexation. As I indicated, the RS1 sites are those that can accommodate septic system and water. The single-family zoning for that half-acre will meet the market need, and what they have indicated is the developers, they're getting calls for and a lot of interest in. The annexation of this property will open up a new area of the city to the kind of northwest, over there, west, northwest, and eventually, it will provide infrastructure expansion for, certainly for water, and we're hoping for. The smaller lots have to be on sewer. And so again, staff is recommending approval of the single-family zoning district, dependent on the City Council approving the annexation.
Okay.
And are there any questions?
I have a general question. There's no septic that's proximal to this location for them to tie into. And so they're going, or excuse me, sewer.
No city sewer, that's correct.
So they're going to be using septic systems, individual septic systems on each lot.
Yes.
I know this isn't the only area in San Angelo where that's occurred, and I'm just wondering how that, how that works long-term. If, if septic is eventually run out into this area, is there a requirement for property owners to tie to the sewer at some point and abandon septic?
Yes.
Could you talk through that with us?
Normally, what we have done in the past where there's, if you remember, Old Stone is probably a good example of this, they will be required as their septic systems start to fail to tie on to the city sewer. In this case, since, as they develop that lower portion, it will have to be sewered. They could tie on sewer if the individual property owners wanted to do that. But they will be responsible for extending it, since we are not requiring infrastructure at this point for the sewer. The individual property owners would be responsible for extending it and to hook on to the sewer.
Okay. How far is sewer from the site?
The lower section is going to be the smaller lots.
It's not been extended to the smaller lots yet, so it's right at the intersection to the south.
So Arden Road and 2288?
Yeah.
Is where the sewer is today?
There is sewer there, yes.
Okay. All right. I don't think in this case it's a problem, but I do think that we should be mindful of where we allow these septic systems to go and development patterns. With septic, you have a half-acre lot minimum?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And I know we've encountered issues in Lakeview where we've had utilities that weren't extended to areas that they should have been, and it's, it's been cumbersome and costly for the development of some of those lots. So I just, I'm just talking through it with, with all you guys so you understand what we're doing. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Do you guys have any questions?
What was the rationale for not extending the sewer?
I could let the applicant address that. From our standpoint, I believe it costs, the extension of cost at this point, they're looking to get some development in so they can get some money coming in first. If I could for just a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
We have to do, along with the annexation, we do the services study that we do and the cost-to-the-city study, and we will cover both the benefit of extending the infrastructure to this area and the need to require that that infrastructure, infrastructure be extended as soon as possible because of the need in that area. So I'm hoping that we can cover enough that it'll, it'll become imperative that it should be done sooner rather than later.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure I understand what you said. With the development of the front section, when that takes place, that will be required to be on city sewer because it's less than a half-acre lot?
The one, the smaller lots at the bottom will have to be on city sewer because they're below the minimum for septic.
Right.
So they are starting off with the two larger, so at this point, we can't require it, but as the development occurs, that will open up the need for those smaller lots, and the septic will have, or the sewer will have to be extended, and we hope it's sooner enough to be able to pick it up for the rest of the development.
So, at that point, though, presumably, the larger lots are already built out, have septic in place, and you're thinking that they're going to abandon their septic and tie into sewer?
They will not, probably not be required to do that until their septic's fail.
Okay.
So we'll have a mix in the area, more than likely.
Well, we've gotten into trouble with that because I have the same situation on Cox Lane, is that the first to fail, if they don't approve the septic, is a huge bill because there is no sewer line. So in essence, if I recall, the first to fail has to pay for the entire sewer line because no one else puts the money in to do it. Is that still pretty much correct? So I mean, first to fail?
Pretty much, yes.
First to fail gets a very, very large bill.
Yes.
Is the, is the developer extending sewer through the site?
Not at this point, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, even after the fact? You talked about extending it in the southern tracks.
Right, for that lot, yeah.
Are they going to, because the other issue, you know, that we've encountered with Lakeview is, you know, what about the, the tracks north of there? And, and they go to develop, and they don't have access to sewer that, they, they may have been afforded access to if they, if the sewer had been extended through the site to the south of them.
Now, any of the sections that come in later?
Yes.
And after they have started extending the sewer, will be required to have sewer extended into them, so that should bring it closer for Section 5 and 6, so the cost there would be smaller than it would have normally.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Let's open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Russell with SKG Engineering, Single-member District 6 for this one. I guess your question kind of regarding the sewer, the, the developer is kind of looking for a mixed use, if you will, of smaller lots there to the south of Bosk or Boski. I'm, I'm with you, which one is it? To, to kind of meet a need, and then, then also kind of, in this economic environment, they, they felt like that there was a need for these half-acre lots, and so, so they're kind of splitting them up. The, the, the cost to get sewer from the intersection of Arden Road and 2288 up into there is quite pricey. There's even just a long extent, they've got to go across property they don't even own just to get really the service to these residential lots. So, so their focus at this point is to do the half-acre lots there to, to the south, I'm sorry, to the north of Bosk and, and develop that area. And with a half-acre lot, the, the, these are TCQ regulations, so the state is involved in this. They've stated at the Lakeview area, a lot of those issues are because those, those are 50-by-100 lots in Lakeview, and you can't fit a home antiseptic system very well there.
Correct.
That's hence the reason for the half-acre minimum when you have a septic system. And there's even, within that, there's even a place for a replacement septic system if yours was to fail on a half-acre lot. The, the septic systems with these infiltrator panels for a single-family residential would take up, you know, maybe, the, the panels are three feet wide by, you know, maybe a run of, of 100 feet or, or less, so you'd have about 10 feet by 100 feet of infiltrator panel. So theoretically, you could probably replace the system numerous times with that. The soils up here are the typical cleechy soils, we're not down in clays where there's a percolation problem, if you will. So septic systems, and that's part of what we have to do, is a suitability study to demonstrate that septic systems are suitable for these areas. So, so that'll all be met. One of the other questions I guess brought up about sewer, if they ever develop further to the north. This, this property by elevation is kind of going in a different, is moving uphill, so in the future, if, even if we did septic for this area to get sewer to the further north, we actually have to come along 2288?
Yep.
And follow it and come around the backside to get the sewer because it's an up-and-over. So, so really, these are kind of at the end of where sewer can extend, and to get the sewer, we're going to come around the backside, so.
Okay.
Happy to answer any other questions. Would, would ask for your approval of the zone change and both final plats.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this case or these cases? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
We need two separate motions. I'm thinking for...
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision plat and a second motion to approve the rezoning.
Second, both.
Okay, so let's hear the, let's vote on the, the motion to approve the subdivision plat. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four, zero. And then, on the rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment, Z 2308, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That one's four, zero as well. Subdivision plats, RP 2321, a request for approval of a final plat. FP 2331 for Glenna subdivision, Dollar General, Lot 1, Block 1, located at 1261 and 1349 Glenna Street. Then I'm also going to read in, under Section B, rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments, Z 2307, a request for rezoning from Heavy Commercial zoning district to the Neighborhood Commercial zoning district, being 2.473 acres located at 1261 and 1349 Glenna Street. Mr. Vanoy.
Good morning. Aaron Vanoy, Assistant Director, Planning and Development Services. So first, we'll go through the plat for the Glenna subdivision, Dollar General, Lot 1, Block 1. If you see this first screen here where I have the address, I have a correction that needs to be made. It is 1261 and 1349 Glenna Street. The 69 Glenna Street is the incorrect address, so that is on this slide, but in the report, it is correct. It is District 2, Tommy Thompson, in the Angelo Heights neighborhood. So you can see it there, outlined in red, it's two trapezoid lots there off of Glenna Street. Here again, that same image where they're actually putting those two lots into one lot. It's very hard to see on this image, but along Glenna Street, which is going north and south or along the right side of this, they are dedicating seven feet of right-of-way. Glenna Street is a minor arterial. The right-of-way was variable, and they're cleaning it up by dedicating seven feet of right-of-way to make that right-of-way adequate for a minor arterial. The roadway there is actually 48 and a half feet wide. Our minimum standard is 48 feet, and so that does meet our minimum standards, so there's nothing road improvement-wise. They do have some infrastructure items, and I put this screen on there just showing that it is a minor arterial. There's a reason why those lots have been vacant for a very long time. There's not really any infrastructure. They have been working with our Engineering Services Department to work through those items. Obviously, there's going to be a sewer extension of some kind, as well as a water main extension along Glenna, and there's more than likely going to need to be a hydrant closer to that area. And so the, the engineering firm knows that, the applicants know that, as well as our engineering staff, and they're working through those items so that they can continue with development. One of the challenges, as we always know, in this part of town sewer, and engineering has already worked with them, that usually we make them go all the way to the extent of the newest lot in case there's further development. This is the backside of the OC Fisher Dam, and that's just the soccer fields up there and the soccer association, so we're looking at, is that really necessary at this time to go all the way to the north because the sewer is very close to being at elevation, and so that's a, a little bit of a challenge for them to develop. So staff has recommended approval of the Glenna subdivision, Dollar General, Lot 1, Block 1, with the following seven conditions. Provide their tax certificate, extend sewer main, extend water main, install necessary utility service connections, submit a drainage study and make any required improvements, provide sidewalk along Glenna, and add fire hydrant where necessary. Any questions on the subdivision plat?
Anyone have questions? Looks pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me move forward to the rezoning. All right, so here's the rezoning, again, for those two lots at 1261 and 1349 Glenna Street. It's 2.426 acres. It is currently heavy commercial, and we are requesting to go to neighborhood commercial. The original thought was just go to general commercial, which is kind of between the heavy commercial and the neighborhood commercial, but the underlying vision plan is actually neighborhood, and so general commercial doesn't work great with that, and so it would, their smaller development fits within the top end of the neighborhood commercial, and so we believe that's an appropriate transition at that spot. Again, Tom Thompson, District 2, Angelo Heights neighborhood. So here you can see that neighborhood center on the left side of the screen, that's the vision plan, that, that whole strip is neighborhood center, so the idea is, over time, along that minor arterial, that it will transition more to a neighborhood center to satisfy the neighborhoods that are associated. On the right, you see what the current zoning is, and you can see across the street, there's some CG and CGH, or CG and CH. To the north, the soccer has got a PD, as well as their, their clubhouse has got general commercial, and then everything else is kind of heavy commercial but on the lighter end of heavy commercial, all the way down to Mercedes Street. And so, over time, we anticipate with this new development, that may transition into some more retail-type thing and maybe bring some of the heavy commercial out of that area just a little bit. We did send out 17 notices. We did receive one in support from the property owner, none in opposition. We have not had any phone calls either over the last couple of weeks of those notices being out in the neighborhood. Our rationale, this is adjacent to some neighborhood areas. It is a high-traffic intersection in that area, even with turning off into the neighborhoods. There is residential in the soccer fields to the north of Glenna as well as OC Fisher Dam, and so going north, it, on the left side or the northwest side of the road, it's, it tends to not be very developed through there. So we're trying to make some kind of transition as we come down the road south of, all right, we start seeing some smaller commercial development and then all the way to Houston Heart. We believe the CN zoning will provide a buffer between the heavy commercial to the south and the soccer fields. This also gives an opportunity for some walkability in the area that the folks that are using the soccer fields might be able to go to Dollar General and, and use that facility as well. We do see that Glenna is a, is a minor arterial. It's something the whole community should consider at some point of how do we make that even more walkable, particularly with most of the neighborhood being across Glenna to the east? How do we have some kind of control for walkability to get over to Dollar General and some of those facilities? Because there's not a controlled intersection there right now. Maybe that's a study for the future and, and look at that at some point. We do recommend approval from this, from the heavy commercial zone, the CH, to the neighborhood commercial for 1261 and 1349 Glenna Street. Any further questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you.
I'll leave it there on that one.
That'll work. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district.
Good morning, my name's Ben Barrier. I don't know, what do I do for the single address?
I don't know, what do I do for the single address district?
Are you an applicant?
Yes, I represent the developer.
Okay.
On this project.
Okay.
First, I'd like to thank you all for hearing me out this morning, and Aaron, thank you for all your work. I appreciate it. I just want to stand up here and say that, you know, I find sites for Dollar Generals all the way from North Houston, all the way to Midland, Odessa. And my goal is always to find sites that are going to be good for the community and good for the city. And I think this is a really good opportunity to do that in this neighborhood. And then I wanted to open it up to you all. If you all have any questions to me, I'll answer to the best of my ability. I'm not the engineer. You couldn't be here today, so I can do the best I can, but thank you all.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? Please come forward, state your name. I'm going to close public comment. We're going to need a couple of motions.
The motion to approve the subdivision plat. And then again, second motion to approve the rezoning.
Second both motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the subdivision plat. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four zero. And rezoning, we have a motion and a second to approve 2307. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four zero. All right. PP 2311 and RP 2323 preliminary plat of Andrew D. Smith subdivision, sections one and two, and first replat of lot three, section one, and second replat of lot five, section two, Andrew D. Smith subdivision, located in the 100 block of Media Street and the 1200 block of Luna Street.
All right. So we do have this revised preliminary plat for Andrew D. Smith, section one and section two, and then the first replat in it as well. So, see if I can mess this up real quick. So here on the screen, for those of you that can see, the original preliminary plat included these lots here to the left, which is to the west towards Bell Street. Those have already been final plated and started development on. This larger lot was originally two lots, and now they've converted that, they purchased a small piece here and incorporated it in and has made it into three lots. So that is the reason for the revised preliminary plat. It is RS1 zoning in the 100 block of Medina and the 1200 block of Luna, District Four. Ms. Gonzalez is our single member district and Bel Air neighborhood. So here's just that preliminary plat portion that shows those three lots that are going to be incorporated into the original preliminary plat. Again, the final plat is a reflection of those. They are going to be RS1. They do have single-family houses to be developed on them. That one along Luna, and then the one, the two there, or excuse me, I said that wrong. The two on Luna on the right side and on the southern side is Medina. The small lot in between there that kind of curves around already has an existing residence on it. The other two lots are not a part of this replat. So staff is recommending approval of the revised preliminary plat. There are no conditions for that, just for to turn in for signatures here at the local jurisdiction. And then staff does recommend approval for the first replat of Andrew D. Smith, excuse me, section one, lot three, creating those three lots in section replat, second replat of Andrew D. Smith. The normal plat conditions are provide tax certificate, extend sewer main, extend water main, and install utility services connections. I'm going to go back just to the plat for just a moment. On Luna Street, they are working with our engineering services. On the right side of Luna Street, there are some water meters. Now, it looks like those water meters possibly are in the alleyway behind those, and so there might be a water main extension. We're not sure. We put it as a condition, but they will work with our engineering services to resolve that, as well as the sewer, I believe is maybe in the alleyway between Medina and the northern street on how they get that sewer main down to those lots. In Medina, there is already water and sewer for that front-facing lot 3A. So that's why those conditions are read that way, but they will work with our engineering services division to resolve any utility issues in that area. That?
Okay.
Take any questions?
Could you go back to the plat?
Yes.
Please. So the lot that's kind of irregular shaped?
Yes.
There's a, there's a lot kind of in the southwest corner.
You can barely see it there, but you can see the red outline, there is a home there.
Yes.
That's already there. They're not part of the plat, they're already existing. They are actually converting them, they were on septic, they're converting them there. The developers actually connecting them to the sewer main there so they don't have to worry about the septic field because they don't have enough space. And then the two lots to the, to the right.
To the west.
If they ever develop, they will be able to connect to sewer and water as well.
Okay. All right. Does the lot in that southwest corner meet the minimum lot size requirement?
I don't know 100%, but I'm going to say probably not. It is actually a platted lot.
Okay.
Back from when the first original Andrew D. Smith came in, but.
But the applicant doesn't own that lot?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Let me go back to this one. That's that lot four there.
Yeah, I can't read the.
It's very.
The dimensions.
Yeah.
It shows, it shows there's dimensions.
The surveyors that did it may have a better idea, they may have, they may be able to say, yes, it actually does meet the, I'm really not sure.
Okay.
I didn't look at that, to be honest.
All right. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Aaron. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Good morning. Erica Wilde with Carter Fintress Engineering. To answer your question, I'm not sure if it meets the lot requirement, but the plan actually is to sell or give that piece. So right here?
Yes. Okay. Got it.
They should have a little bit more room. Other than that, we just ask that you approve as presented.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. I also want to clarify that this is the 100 block of Medina, not Media. So all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Four zero. All right. Rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. Item one, PD 0503. Amendment, a request to amend an existing plan development ordinance, PD 0503, to allow institutional and civic uses in Area C, a residential district, subject to certain conditions located at 5687 Melrose Avenue.
Staff has been working with the applicant over the past few months. They are wanting to do, they are wanting to do an expansion of their athletic facilities, and they're doing a couple of other projects. In the process of looking at the building permit requests for those, we went back and discovered that over the years, there have been some changes to the original PD that was approved in 2005. Dash 03 was that PD. And there were, was talk about amending that PD in the past, but it was not fulfilled. And so in talking with the applicant, we said, let's bring everything up to date on your PD amendment and what you're doing. And essentially, what we ended up recommending is that the uses be extended across the property because there's no way to separate them out. In the past, it was a little easier, the residential area was easier to separate out. Now it contains the maintenance area, and it's right next to where the athletic field house is going to be built. So we're recommending amending the original PD to include all of the uses across the board on that property. And again, this is PD 0503 that we're recommending amending. It's in District Six, Mr. Miller's districts, and it's in the Bluffs neighborhood. You can see that pink area where, and then the development within it, that's actually Area C on the original PD. And that is the area that had the, that has the daycare facility, but it also has the maintenance area, it also has some other facilities that serve across, uses across the board. And so that is the area that originally brought this forward. The gold area is the new field house that they are proposing. And within that area, and I believe that was area either B or A, it did say athletics. This is like one step above that, going to the field house and eventually looking at doing a stadium or some additional seating in that area. We did send out 32 notices. We received none in favor. There was one opposition. The person who opposed said they were concerned about the noise, especially evening noise, street parking, when there are any athletic events going on. There are a lot of people that come, they're, they do park on the street, not just in the parking lot, and it does impact the residents. You can see where that, the person who sent in his concern is located. So he, it's logical that he would be impacted during the, particularly during the athletic areas. In looking at this, we determined that it was in fact appropriate to look at extending the uses across the board to the whole facility to cover everything that they are, have done in the past and what they are looking to do in the future. And so we're saying, we believe that the impacts will not change because the school is already doing that on the site. We're just extending it across the board. We believe it is consistent with the zoning ordinance, that the underlying uses particularly in this area are educational, athletics, recreation, maintenance, and equipment repair. And that's consistent with other large school facilities. The daycare facility also fits under the initial uses approved in 2005, and I think they continue to use that facility. We believe it is compatible with the surrounding area, as indicated, schools are always next to or in residential areas. This school is not uncommon. And schools, particularly schools that have junior high and high school facilities, do have recreational, they do have athletic facilities. And so what they are, TLCA is intending on doing, is consistent with what other schools do, particularly when they're associated in residential areas, because that's the area that they serve. We believe that there is a community need that has been demonstrated. The facility out there has grown and grown, and we believe that it contributes to the community. The original zoned approach had the school in Zone A and B, and the residential daycare area in Zone C. Having the uses spread across and letting them expand into that area just makes it consistent across the board. And so with that, staff is recommending approval of the amendment to the existing PD 0503, the planned development zoning district, to allow the underlying base zoning of neighborhood commercial, also allowing educational, athletic, recreational, maintenance, equipment, repair uses within the property of 5687 Melrose Avenue, generally the school site. And there are a number of addresses, but that's generally the school site for that entire facility. And with that, are there any questions?
Do you guys have any questions? Could you go back to the site map?
Yes. Yeah, let me when it's the one you want to see.
Right there.
Okay.
So all of the structures on this map are part of the school?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Is there residential on the southern portion where the.
Where the.
Highlighted areas or?
Generally, it's the daycare facility. That's what required the residential initially.
Okay. Is there, is there residential property?
Yes.
That abuts the southern portion of that side?
Right. And right down Melrose across the street, you've got a cul-de-sac and a few homes facing.
Yeah, all across.
Canal there, and then that's AEP's substation site is the bigger piece.
Right.
With the overhead.
Let's see. It doesn't really have it on that one, but that.
Where does the, it's hard for me to orient that map to the, to the site map, because it looks like Melrose is running through the middle of it.
Okay, this area.
Or is Melrose on the northern end of it? I'm sorry. Now I see.
Oh, okay.
So is that a dead, is that an AEP easement or is that a street?
It is. It's an AEP easement. The bulk of that area is the AEP easement, which separates it from the residential.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, do you mind going back to the site map again?
Surely.
Are there any residential, I'm assuming that they're going to build this field house? Is that what's prompted this discussion?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so how close is that field house to, to homes?
The field house is actually adjacent to the AEP property, so the homes are on the other side of the AEP.
Okay, so there's like 100 feet or more.
At least, yes.
Okay.
Probably more.
Probably 115.
My, one of my concerns would be if, if we allow a field house there that's, we don't know what it looks like, but if it's, let's say, a three-story structure, I'd be pretty upset if I was a neighbor and I had that put as close to me as they could put it. Do you know anything about the structure?
Yes, it is a two-story structure. Generally with the same material that matches the school facilities.
Okay. And it's not possible to orient that, why, why have they selected that spot? Is there another spot on the side where that might?
The.
Work?
The applicant is here, and I think he can address that, but from a strictly staff standpoint, this area is where the, the football field is.
Yes, ma'am.
So it really doesn't lend itself anywhere else. Originally, there was some talk about being able to work something out with AEP, but they were not able to do that.
Right.
And so they have to crowd the facility and where they can.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions? Thank you, Jerry. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Scott White, I'm with the Texas Leadership Public Schools. Just to kind of clear a couple of questions, we're not proposing a stadium at this time. It is strictly a practice facility. The field house is actually just a simple metal structure behind the residential. There's already some existing similar-type buildings there, so it should not be an eyesore to the neighborhood. We are not going to try and do a stadium at this time. We understand that noise, lighting, parking will all be an issue. We're simply just trying to get our high school athletics all on one location to do their practices.
Okay.
So that's the extent of it.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Marilyn Sanders, and I live right across from TLCA. I live at 5701 Stratford Court, which is the cul-de-sac across from it. I was not the one that said opposition, but I guess I would. And my biggest concern is the parking. The noise we just put up with when they play their music, that's fine in the evenings, but the parking is horrendous. They park everywhere, all day in our neighborhood. They park in front of our house, they park in front of my driveway when it's pickup time. I have been over to the school and talked to them. I have been over to the school and talked to them about that, and they just said, "You moved in a neighborhood with a school, you should have known." I'm a retired school teacher, and when we bought this house, we lived on the East Coast, and we bought this house, and I said, "It's not going to be a problem. Schools are not a problem." You know, I've worked for thirty years in the school system until we got here. And then, like we said, it is a problem because they park everywhere. I don't know if, if when they, you know, approve this or get this or whatever, if they can come in and say, "Well, you can't park on one side of the street," because it's a big, wide street. It's also a street that has a curve, and when people park on both sides of the street and kids are crossing that road, because there's no, like, speed bumps to stop them, there's no lights, you can't see people coming down that road. And I've seen kids, you know, I mean, cars have had to stop because kids are in the middle of the road and they don't see that. I've been over to talk to the principal about that, and he said, "Well, if they don't pick them up in the parking lot, there's nothing I can do about it." I was like, "Okay." You know, I mean, I've tried to, you know, do some problem solving with that. But that's my biggest concern is how much more problem will that be with kids? You know, and I'm sure it's the practice guys and, you know, the kids from school, but having them not park all along everybody's, you know, front driveway there. Okay?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Does the, does the school use this facility for their regular season football games or is it just practice? Anyone else wish to speak on this? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take feedback or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented. The way that it was explained, that it's, you know, meeting the, the current standards that are already there. You know, I understand about the traffic, I understand about everything else, and I think signage may support and help some of that, but it's, it's something that I think most schools have issues with, so I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four zero.
Just out of random curiosity, is it possible for, for instance, because I, I drive that neighborhood constantly, for certain streets to get no parking signs put up? Like, how does that process work?
There, there is a process. It's typically based on factors like the narrowness of the street, those sorts of things, but that goes to the city's Public Works Department. I, I think it would be very unlikely to get no parking signs on that street with the possible exception of, if there is a curve with kind of a blind corner.
Sure.
That might be an option. Obviously, people aren't supposed to block driveways, so that's something that...
Right.
Shouldn't be happening, but especially in a, you know, an area where there are kid pickup locations.
Right.
They'd have to balance that versus all of the other issues.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. CP twenty-three oh-two and PD twenty-three oh-four, a request for an amendment to the comprehensive plan changing from neighborhood to neighborhood center and rezoning RS1, RS2, and CGCH to a planned development district, allowing RS1, RS2, and neighborhood commercial uses, subject to certain conditions and limitations located along an approximately one block on either side of four thousand forty-one hundred and forty-two hundred blocks of Coliseum Drive. So our original plan was to, to go through a, a pretty lengthy discussion about rezoning this area directly south of the Coliseum. We have two planning commission members that are absent today and, or three, excuse me, three. And I'd, I'd like for them to participate in the discussion before we make decisions. So I think what I'd like to do is, if it's okay with the staff, open it up for public comment. If anyone's here to speak on it, maybe take their thoughts. And then I'd propose tabling this to the next meeting if, if everyone else is agreeable. Hopefully, we've got the full, full group of folks here to discuss it. Is that okay with you guys? All right, so I'm going to open up for public comment the discussion about rezoning near the Coliseum. Anyone wish to speak on that case? Please come forward and state your name and address. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move to table the discussion to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, and the next meeting is going to be August twenty-first at nine AM. So we have a motion and a second to table this case to August twenty-first at nine AM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So four zero to table. Conditional uses, a request, excuse me, the planning commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the city council. Case one, CU twenty-three thirty, a request for approval of a short-term rental located at twenty-five oh-six Sleepy Hollow Road.
Good morning, Ray Lineberry Planner. So we listened to you guys, and there is a map now showing this neighborhood, and there's three in green that are currently, have conditional uses, have their COs, they're operating as short-term rentals. As far as we know, there is not any that are operating without a CU. There are three expired, and those are the ones in yellow. And then there is one that was, I'm keeping denied and rejected in the same category, and it was denied in red. The purple star is the one that I'm about to present.
Just for clarification, expired means that they came in and obtained a permit, and the initial permit period has expired and they haven't come in for a renewal?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. One of them expired this past May, the other two expired last year.
Okay.
I'm sure they're still operational.
They shouldn't be, but we, we do not know.
Okay.
Okay. So this is a request for a short-term rental in the RS1 zoning. It is Tommy Hebert's District One in the Nazworthy neighborhood, and that is a picture of the front. It will need paved parking. There is no, no pavement there. We did send out seven notices, we received zero in favor, we did receive one in opposition, but they didn't say why or, or anything else, they just marked opposed. So we are recommending approval with the three, three conditions, that they pave and then maintain the parking, they obtain a certificate of occupancy, and they obtain with the fire marshal inspection.
Okay.
Is there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff?
And the applicant is here.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. We're going to open it up for public comment. Good morning.
Good morning. I don't know if this is a appropriate place to ask this, so I probably should have talked to Ray first, but I've never done this before. On the pavement, is it have to be paved or can it be compacted, crushed granite with a border? Okay, that's what I just wanted to declare, like, make sure what I'm getting into.
Okay. Could you state your name?
Canji Adams.
All right, are you the applicant?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Canji.
Thank you.
Anyone have questions for the applicant? No?
I'll just note, since, since Ray wasn't at a microphone, that the answer to that question was yes, it does have to be paved.
It does need to be paved. Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. I'm very familiar with this area. It's very close to the entrance into the park where the, where the RV, what, Spring Creek Marina and RV Park is located. I've been down Sleepy Hollow a number of times. There's not a lot of parking on Sleepy Hollow, but it's not a really narrow, it's not, it's not so narrow that you can't find a place kind of in that area to, to park. But I do think that having off-street parking is important, especially in this area. Anyone else have thoughts they want to share or make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So four zero. All right, CU twenty-three thirty-three, a request for a conditional use for an animal training facility, dog daycare, and an overnight kennel located at seven forty-nine Warehouse
Okay. Okay, Ray Lineberry again. And I passed out, we had a late, we received opposition late Friday, so I printed it and, and sent it, or brought it to you guys. But this is a conditional use to allow a doggy daycare grooming and training facility within the CGCH zoning. In the future, it'll be an overnight kennel, but at the moment, it's just going to be a, a daycare facility with grooming and training. It is CGCH zoning, District Three, Tom Thompson, wait a minute, I'm sorry, Harry Thomas, Rio Vista neighborhood. And we sent out fifteen notices, we received zero in favor, and this is the one opposed, I added it, that you have the printout.
Okay.
Just some street pictures and, and the facility picture. So staff is recommending approval. The animal kennels, you have to get a conditional use just about in almost any zone. So our feelings were, since it's in a commercial area and everything like that, it's not really usually operating at night when you have the overnight kennels, so not a lot of, a lot of loud and, and everything. So it does conform to commercial use as it is there providing a service. We do recommend the conditions be that the lighting shall be fully shielded, and they need to obtain a change of occupancy within twelve months. And it does include a final development plan showing all parking, where they plan on putting the outside kennels and any storage areas, and it will be approved by the planning director.
Just for clarification, you talk about obtaining a change of occupancy within twelve months?
Yes.
I'm assuming that the change of occupancy would need to be obtained before they begin operating...
Correct.
As a kennel?
Correct.
But that this would only be good for twelve months? Like, if they don't come in within twelve months for the change of occupancy, then this conditional use would expire? Is that what you're stipulating?
Yes, and that's not uncommon for these. We don't want them just lingering out there, and, you know, we've had some old ones where, you know, maybe something, a special use was approved twenty years ago.
Yes.
And then somebody comes in to use it, and maybe things have changed, and so we give them a set time, which you all could change, but that's pretty typical, the twelve months.
Okay.
We have had, the commission in the past has extended that, you know, twenty-four months or...
Right.
But it's pretty typical so that it doesn't just sit out there and then nothing happens.
I understand.
And I will say, speaking with the applicant, most of what he plans on doing is inside the building, with a few exceptions, of course, out back.
Okay.
But it is, the training facility and doggy daycare is inside.
Do you have any renderings of what's proposed?
I do not.
Okay.
Is there room for external training?
It is the area in red, so they have a, a large front yard.
I was going to say, it looks like the, the building is oriented to the back of the lot.
Yeah, that's us.
So, yeah, it's this one. So they, they do have a rather large front yard.
Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please state your name and address or single member district or tell us you're the applicant.
My name's Ken Schlout. I'm actually the opposition. I'm a developer and builder, I own the property right next to...
Yes, sir.
Seven forty-five Warehouse Road. Couple comments, one, I'm...
I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, do you mind going back to the slide that showed the, the aerial?
I was going to ask you to, so thank you.
Yeah. Perfect, thank you.
Is that better? Okay. Couple comments, one, our building next to it, we are not a eight to seven or nine to five operation. We operate commercial and residential construction companies. We meet with clients over there on a regular basis, most of the time in the evenings.
Okay.
So there's a reason why dog kennels and those type operations aren't allowed in certain areas, and it's because of the noise. And there's no room, if you look at the back of this property, there's not enough room for kennels of much of any size in the back of it without encroaching on setbacks and things like that, so they have no, no option but to put them in the front, which makes it even worse.
Yes, sir.
The applicant for this does not own the property. They have not purchased the property yet, they've got plenty of other options and alternatives. So I would request in order to, to keep this with, with happy neighbors, that we find some sort of other alternative for them.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
I am the applicant. My name's Robert Broussard.
Hi, Robert.
A lot of people have conceptions, first, this is not going to be a boarding kennel. Dog, the type, dogs will be kennelled inside, they will sleep inside, so I understand the concern of the, the opposition about noise at night, but the dogs will be inside in their kennels at night, and so there won't be any noise. Second of all, any outdoor activity by dogs will be in the south portion of the building. There won't be kennels outside. So, and I think one of the renderings is that I sent the commission, the planning office is the, shows an outside use area, and I don't know if you guys have that, but it hasn't...
No, we never got that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, right here.
So there's, there's an outside use area highlighted, which is towards the empty lot, and there will be a, towards my, my neighbors, if you notice that there's no occupied, there's no occupied buildings in the, near the outdoor use area. And there's a, about a thirty-five foot buffer on either side of the, of, between my prop, the property line and the building. So pretty much, dogs will be out night, they're not, I'm not going to have indoor/outdoor runs where dogs can freely run in and out of, out of, inside and outside freely. So the, the front portion of the building will be used for people, no dogs will be playing in the north of the building. So, and as a dog trainer, barking annoys me, too much barking annoys me anyway, and I think too much barking's unhealthy. And so I, I actively work to minimize barking and noises and smells in, in, in my personal business. So I do have a, the building... So I do have a, the building, that building's currently under contract with a option, a 45-day option, so I am, I have put option money down on the building and intend to purchase the building if I get cleared to, by the planning commission. So it's a different type of kennel. I know most people have in their minds of dogs going in and out and pooping in the runs. Well, we don't do that. Dogs are sleeping in kennels at night indoors, and they are go, they have a play area inside as well, the building, so they will spend quite a bit of time indoors. Any overnight dogs will be training. I won't be taking dogs for boarding that are not being trained, actively being trained. So in my experience working at boarding kennels, the dogs can be quite wild because they are untrained, but, and that's why I don't want to board dogs from the general public. I want to be actively training dogs. And so it's gonna be, any kind of dog that will be kept overnight will be in the process of being trained. So that's, that's kind of clears up a little bit some of the opposition's concerns, and anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you.
How many dogs can you house?
I can, I'll be able to house, based upon my planning, maximum of 10 dogs overnight. And there will be some, in a room for daycare dogs as well. So maximum of, say, right now, I'm anticipating 16 daycare dogs. And they will be in separate rooms within the building.
And Robert, your overnight stays, because it's a stay and train-
Right.
-program that you offer, it's what, I believe, two weeks, right? Typically, is what you recommend for most?
Um, it, you know, I think most people don't want to be away from their dogs more than two weeks, if two weeks at all. So I'll have a, you know, a shorter program like two weeks and also a longer program. But typically, dogs are noisiest at the beginning, and if we see their noisy dogs, we address that immediately. Hey, the dog's barking a lot, let's start addressing that right away, even if it's indoors. Even if they're barking indoors, we start addressing it. And so it could be up to, I'd say, a month or six weeks, but typically, by the end, they're very quiet.
Okay.
And we have ways to manage noise as well through, if you have a noisier dog, you can, you know, kennel it in a different area, and I'll have a quiet room for, to minimize stimulation in one of the offices. So if a dog tends to get provoked to bark easily, we move the dog over into a quieter room. So there's different ways to manage it with an environment where we, and reward calmer, quieter behavior. So, and so I've been in the industry for over 20 years, and I personally train all my staff, will personally train all my staff. Typically, from my experience in most boarding kennels, you have newbies working, and/or maybe someone who's purchased a kennel who hasn't been in the industry very long, and they don't, aren't great at managing noise, or they're out in the country, they really don't care. So I've been pretty successful at helping dogs get quieter, and typically, if you see in, you know, larger cities, you're seeing doggy daycares in larger city, in the core of the city, you're not, people can't, if they're dog, dropping their dog off before work, they can't drive, you know, 10 miles out in the country for daycare every day. So you're seeing that happen in cities, and I think it's time San Angelo started offering these services.
Anyone else have questions? Thank you, Robert. Okay. Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment.
Travis, I will note that as a conditional use, you all can place any additional conditions that you think might be helpful. And just as a reminder, you'll notice there, this is a CGCH, so heavy commercial uses are allowed-
Yes.
-in this area. I think the current use, or maybe previous use, was diesel engine repair. And so if you imagine the things that can happen in heavy commercial-
Yes, sir.
-they're not exactly quiet always as well.
Does the current use of non-diesel engine repair, is it storage?
Yes, sir.
There's no activity at all?
Well, I'm very familiar with this area, and as Mr. James indicated, if you look at this zoning map, we've got heavy commercial and CGCH in all directions around this site. And I certainly understand the concern about noisy dog kennels, noisy neighbors, but I'm, I guess I'm hopeful that we might be able to find a way with maybe some restrictions on the number of dogs or hours or something, that we can find a way to make this work.
Well, I've done quite a bit of research on Robert's program, and have looked him up on Facebook. He's got phenomenal reviews from his stay and train program. I've known people that have used him. I personally have actually used him, and I know that my dog came back night and day, which was fantastic. He does not bark. He is very well-mannered now. So, you know, I definitely understand Mr. Schlot's concerns, you know, being that he is a builder that has clients there consistently. But I do think that Robert has raised a good point in the fact of his training facility is considerably different than other boarding facilities, and I can personally attest to that.
All right.
I mean, I understand the zoning and the heavy industrial use and potential noise in the area, but I just, I don't know if this is the best location for that type of facility personally.
Okay.
Good.
Anyone wish to make a motion?
Yeah. I will make a motion to approve as presented by staff.
I'll second.
Are there any restrictions in place with what's proposed by the staff, or is it just a conditional use to allow?
It would just be those three that are listed.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Three one. Public comment, issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the DIAS, begin by stating their name or single member district. I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Planning directors report.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services, just had a few things to mention. One, you probably noticed, Zach Rainbow, Planning Manager, is not here. He has resigned, so last meeting was his last meeting. His last day was actually this past Friday, so that's why he's not here. I wanted to mention the A&amp;M Plan Development that you guys heard at your last meeting.
Yes, sir.
As we looked at the case, you approved it, but without the retail component.
Yes.
All of those other uses were already allowed under the Plan Development, so there's no need for it to go forward to City Council with any amendment, because, again, without those, the existing PD covers it all. So I just wanted to make that publicly known in case people are wondering, hey, why hasn't that gone to City Council? I just wanted to note the new agenda format. You may have noticed, we're using a new software program that it makes preparation of agendas and all of the packet and reports much simpler on our side. One of the downsides is, it looks like this, and that's what it's gonna look like. I know we have, for example, the underlining is a little weird that everything is underlined, or almost everything, but there are some formatting things that we can't change with this software. So again, I think it's making our process a lot more efficient, and hopefully, it's still usable and readable for you all. And then finally, I wanted to note that you heard a number of short-term rentals at your last meeting. As you may know, there is an appeal period of 30 days that applicants have that they can appeal, or if it's approved, neighbors or anyone else can appeal. So far, we've had two appeals that have been filed. One is for a short terminal that was approved, that opponents have appealed. The other one is one that was denied by you all, that the applicant is appealing to the City Council. The deadline for those appeals is Wednesday, I believe, so we could still have a few more of the 15 that you heard last time, but then once that appeal period has run out, we'll look at taking those appeals forward to City Council. And of course, we will keep you in the loop, let you know how those appeals fare when they get to City Council.
That'd be great.
That's all I had.
I do appreciate it. I want to thank staff or whoever is on the back end on the GIS COSA map for changing the color. That was fantastic, because you can actually see them if you zoom out on the neighborhood, so thank you for that. And John, do we have any update on the information that I requested from the last meeting that the financing department has as far as, like, where we looked, or the company that we hired in order to do research for us? Our last meeting, you mentioned that the finance department had all that information and hadn't been shared. Do we have an update on?
Yes. I don't know if, Ray, you have more information, but we have compiled a, basically a spreadsheet of all of the short-term rentals that came out of that audit, comparing those against the ones we already have conditional uses for, and then identifying the ones that we don't. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Maybe. Okay. So it looks like we had 85 total that came out of that list-
That were-
-that audits.
That were operating-
That were, that were operating, that they found on an Airbnb site.
That have not come to us.
No, it was a total of 85.
Oh.
Total of 85 that they found. And then 35 of them are currently CU'd. They don't, they all don't have COs, but they did at least get a conditional use at one time. Some of them are expired, some of them never got COs, some of them, but it was a total of about 45 that are operating that have never come to us. Okay. Some of those you have seen.
But all of those have been sent a letter indicating that they must get a conditional use, go through the city's process, as well as registering for hotel taxes, both with the city and state. And so, again, that's why you saw 15 at the last meeting, because those were the people who got that letter and immediately came in to resolve it, but I suspect we'll continue to see more that try to follow up on that, because the ones that don't, I'm assuming will get a follow-up letter saying-
Yeah.
-you're still out of compliance.
We've also received quite a few phone calls about it, and knowing some of the steps they have to take, some of them have decided not to continue. So there is also that.
Okay. So is there a timeframe that was sent out in these letters for people to get into compliance?
I don't think so.
I don't remember if there was a, it's often the case that we, they're given a certain amount of time. I think with this, because it involved planning, finance, code enforcement, I think this first initial letter was just a, hey, you're out of compliance here, the things you need to do to come into compliance. I think a follow-up will probably include some sort of deadline by which you have to do something, or you might face further enforcement action, citations or those sorts of things.
Okay.
You raised something that, when we were reviewing this case out at Nazworthy, we had three or four properties that had applied for conditional use approval and obtained it, and are, have either expired or didn't meet all of the conditions. Are you guys, do you have on your, on your list to kind of do an audit of what we've approved and-
So I have-
Is there a way for us to kind of keep tabs on those guys and keep them compliant?
So I have started a spreadsheet, and I know where the status is on each one. Even if they haven't gotten a change of occupancy, they still have the year to do that. So I have that. I have if there's, if they were rejected because there was another one around them. So yes, we have statuses. We're coming up with a process to, I guess, notify people that, hey, this, you're expired. You need to come in and do, do more.
Okay.
And we're, we're working on a task force together with code enforcement of, if they don't come to compliance voluntarily, what are steps we're gonna have to take to get them either to come to compliance or they don't operate as a short-term rental?
Yeah. So I'm gonna give you a scenario that concerns me. What if, what if an applicant comes in and he's, they're within 500 feet of a property that's not in compliance? Then maybe they obtained a permit at some point in the past.
Right.
Do you say they can't do it, or?
If the property in question has an existing, non-expired conditional use-
What if it's expired?
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking about the ones we saw.
If it's expired, they lose, it's as if they don't have a conditional use, so another short-term rental could come in and get an approval, and then that one that's expired, if they came back in to renew, basically, although we treat it as a brand-new application, they would be rejected because they're within 500 feet. So anyone out there with a short-term rental, they need to make sure they keep it current, otherwise, they could lose that ability to continue.
Okay.
So I will say, one of the processes we are coming up with, we recently had an application come in, and there's another one within 500 feet, but it has not gotten a change of occupancy yet. And so there is the process of, we are kind of sending out reminders, saying, don't forget, you shouldn't be operating yet because you haven't gone through this process. And one of them responded with, yeah, I'm not doing that, and I got a formal, they withdrew their conditional use, so the other applicant was able to go forward. And then the other one said, oh, no, no, I still plan on doing that, I'm, I'm gonna do it. So-
Okay.
We had to reject the other one.
Okay.
So we do, we have thought of that, and we are coming up with processes.
Perfect. Okay. Follow-up?
Travis, before-
Yes, sir.
On another note, I just want to say thank you to Sherry, Ray, and Austin. They've done really hard work this month by taking over and trying to get everything to you guys in a timely manner, so I just want to recognize them for doing a great job-
Yeah, thank you all.
-trying to get things.
This presentation, I thought, went very smoothly, so thank you. Okay. Follow-up and administrative issues, we've kind of rolled into that with our discussion here. Is there anything else that you guys would like to discuss with the staff or see on future agenda items? Okay. Announcements and consideration of future agenda items. The next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled to begin at 9:00 a.m. on August 21st, 2023, in the East Mezzanine of City Hall, 72 West College Avenue, San Angelo, Texas. Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's four zero, and it's 10:36 a.m.